We're excited to work with you.
Thank you.
And with that, could I have you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Gerard?
Here.
Councilmember Monson?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Present.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
And Mayor Bain?
Here.
All those that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmembers in front of you, you have an agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. This evening, we've got an award presentation to kick us off. Chief Peterson?
Mayor and city council members, good evening. Tonight, we will be recognizing a citizen with a life-saving award. A life-saving award is issued to someone who performed extraordinary actions to save the life of a person who would have likely died if not for the actions taken by the citizen. I would like to introduce Sergeant Bruce Peterson, who was at the scene that day, and he will explain what occurred.
Thank you, Chief. Mrs. Mayor, council. Again, my name is Sergeant Bruce Peterson. And this is, I got goosebumps just starting to talk about this already today. I believe this is the first ever life-saving award that we're giving as a police department. And I'd like to just take a moment to tell everybody is what had taken place. On February 17th, 2019, at 13:05 hours, the Forest Lake Police Department, Forest Lake Fire Department, and North Ambulance were dispatched to a local church for a medical. We were informed that there was a wake service going on at this church, and that we were to respond to the backside of the church. And inside the door, there was a 77-year-old male who fell and struck his head. Moments later, we were updated that the patient was now unconscious, CPR was in progress, and an AED had already delivered one shock to this individual. The Forest Lake Police Department arrived on scene, and we took over medical care from a gentleman that had started this prior to our arrival. As we took over the care, we checked, and we continued CPR. We went through two cycles, which is two minutes each on an AED, and it advised us not, there was no shocks advised. As you can imagine, our team, we worked on multiple full arrests already that week. So now, we're all starting to get into this tone of, here we go again. North Ambulance arrived, and their paramedics came in and took over primary care for the patient. The team was in motion, and everybody worked hand in hand. Forest Lake Fire, North Ambulance, the police officers. And we did, we just fall into our routine of how to handle these. And all of a sudden, we got a pulse back. I noted at that time that the person that started the CPR, he was gone. He was nowhere to be found. So we had to go in search of him. And we found Mr. Josh Phillips, who I'm going to ask to come up in just a few minutes. Officers continued to work the medical as we do, given our best efforts, and continued all the efforts to find Mr. Phillips, so we can say that we're going to get a save out of this. During this time, I had the opportunity to meet with Tim, who is Mr. Bradshaw, who was our patient that day. That's his son. And I eventually met his other daughter, Barb, at the location. As you can imagine, the one thing I can remember is we tried to console family members, is I told Tim, I said, well, at least we're in a good place to maybe get some spiritual help, since we're in a church already. So, lo and behold, the pastor is standing next to me, wasn't he? So, as Tim and Barb sat with me, we ended uploading, the team ended uploading Mr. Phillips, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Bradshaw into North Ambulance, and we overheard that a helicopter was ordered so we could get him down to the cities. As I sat in the foyer, talking with Tim and Barb, trying to console and keep things, a conversation that was somewhat pleasant, and to keep them informed, everybody left except the ambulance. And the ambulance was sitting out there. And I'm sitting with Barb and Tim, and finally Barb looked at me and said, you know, I know it's not good when that ambulance ain't leaving. And you know, deep down in my heart, I'm like, yeah, she's probably right. I said, well, let me go out and check, see what's going on. So I went out to the ambulance, and I opened the back door, and our north paramedics were having their hands full, because as I opened the door, I see Mr. Bradshaw pushing off the paramedic, saying, get off me! I was like, huh, cool. So I had a glimmer of hope. So I went back, and I told Barb and Tim that this is the best-case scenario. Your father's in there giving grief to the paramedic's son to leave him alone. The paramedics did tell me that they were going to make him comfortable for the transport. So shortly after that, the ambulance left, and everybody eventually cleared the scene. So I couldn't wait to get back to the police department, share the news with everybody about Mr. Bradshaw arguing with the paramedic staff and wanting them to get off him. So I'm telling everybody, well, if you guys know how cops are, we like to know all what's going on. So the next day, I called down to the hospital. And there's this HIPAA and data privacy stuff that the nurses aren't really too willing to share. So I did my homework, and I find out that Mr. Bradshaw is a patient. So I said, let me have the nurse's station, and I explained my case. I said, ma'am, we, I know you have Mr. Bradshaw there. I said, I don't want you to give me any data privacy, but can you go to the room, see if somebody's in there that can come and talk to me? I'll get the information from them. Because all too often, like I said, we're, we call down, and sometimes they're in a state that they just don't recover. So a few minutes later, I was transferred to the room, and lo and behold, Mr. Bradshaw's on the other end. And man, I got goosebumps, so again. I said, well, how are you doing? It's good to hear your voice. And he says, well, it's good to hear yours. And I said, how you feeling? And I can remember saying, what did you guys do? Dance on my chest? And I said, well, yeah, kinda. So he's in really good spirits, and of course, that put us all on cloud nine. And I will tell you that I could stand up here and tell you countless stories where we do CPR, and we do medicals, and we do stuff in law enforcement, and it usually does not turn out this way. We had a citizen that day that sprang into action without hesitation and helped a person in need. And we all know that the police department, as well as our fire department and our EMS, and everybody needs a helping hand. And we rely on our community that we know supports the Forest Lake Police Department here. Mr. Phillips stepped forward, and he was our eyes, our ears, and our helping hand, and he started that critical life-saving measures that made a huge difference. He kept his wits, he used an AED, conducted CPR, and he saved a life. Once we took over, Mr. Phillips left like it was no big deal, and he went about it like it was an everyday thing for him. When we talked to him, he made a comment that it's not a big deal, he did what anybody else would do. Mr. Phillips, I'm telling you, it's a big deal. I would just like you to come up here for a minute. It's a win for us, it's a win for our community, it's a win for Mr. Bradshaw, Mr. Bradshaw's family, and everybody in this room. So I know that this is a small token of our appreciation, and I got you, we got you a plaque that says it's life-saver, presented to Josh Phillips for actions that saved a life on February 17th, 2019. I also I'm also going to give Mr. Phillips one of our Forest Lake Police Department patches, you can be an honorary member of our department, and one of our Forest Lake Police Department challenge coins. Mr. Bradshaw, I would like you to come on up here. You got to meet Mr. Phillips for the first time tonight. And since you are such a great teacher, a plaque to the challenge coin.
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm April 22nd, I had a birthday. The best birthday I've ever, congratulations. Thanks, Doug.
That's amazing. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, we have open forum. First up, Ren Gainsley. Open forum is your opportunity to talk to council about any topic of your choosing. Give you three minutes. Looks like you have quite the crew this evening.
Yes, we do.
She represents all of us.
Welcome.
All right. My name is Ren Gainsley. I live at 9419 239th Street North. We represent the residents of Hunter's Hill neighborhood. We are one mile dead-end road, about two miles east of First Lake on 235th Street North and Jensen Avenue North. We come to you tonight looking for help with a nuisance property, which has now become a health and safety hazard to the area. The property at 23620 Jensen Avenue North is the second house in from the entrance. In 2014, this property began to be neglected. The lawn was never mowed, which prompted the first action from the city, but luckily, there was never a grass fire, which could have been devastating. Then, as time went on, more and more vehicles appeared and just sat unlicensed and abandoned for years, which is against city ordinance, and it was unclear if anyone even lived there. In 2018, boxes and bags began appearing in the driveway and yard, and these piles continued to grow in size and number into the winter months. Several calls were placed to the city by neighbors, and then a formal complaint was filed online in mid-January. About a week later, there was a shed fire that required Forest Lake Fire Department response. An email was sent to Mr. Hart asking for an intervention, as this was now a fire hazard. But there was no action taken by the city, stating the snow made documentation difficult. Only a letter was sent to the owners on February 15th. On March 12th, another email with updated photos were sent, but no reply. Six days later, on March 18th, the house was in flames. Luckily, the Forest Lake Fire Department and two other departments were able to contain it to the garage, for the most part, but spent six hours on site due to the amount of material involved and the difficulty accessing the fire through the piles and vehicles in the yard. Even after this, the only action has been to send another letter to remind them of the May 1st deadline to clean up the property. The owners were asked to and agreed to obtain a dumpster. This was, of course, not done. In fact, even more trash had been brought on-site since the second fire. Gas and electricity has been disconnected, and the owner and his adult son were told that nobody was allowed to stay on the property, either in the house or the camper. However, the son continues to live in the camper with his two dogs, telling a neighbor that they can't force me to leave my own property. We have fore Mr. Hart of this also. There was a mention of possible special hearing in the future, where we could give feedback to the council, but we can't wait any longer. We are frustrated with this situation and wonder, what if this property were on Broadway Avenue instead of Jensen Avenue? We assume it would not be allowed to fall into much disrepair, or remain in this condition for as long as it has. Our main concern is that there has become a health hazard, the potential ground contamination from unknown contents of many containers in an area where all residents have wells for our water source, and the neighbors next door will now only drink bottled water. And since someone is living on-site without septic or even running water, what other contamination is expected? There are likely vermin living in the trash piles, and now there's a bad smell emanating from the property as the weather warms up. It is also a safety hazard for anyone living there, as well for the EMS and all wildlife in the area. We understand that some of our issues may have been, may have to wait for the pending foreclosure process, but there are some areas of concern that fall under jurisdiction of the city. So we are hoping to partner with the city staff and become informed about the plan to quickly make this property safe again, and to finally be free of this eyesore at the entrance of our otherwise nice neighborhood.
Thank you so much. So, open forum, we typically, because this item is not on our agenda tonight, we typically don't have a conversation on this particular topic. Thank you for being here. I can tell you that this is high on staff radar, and is being actively worked and pursued, probably not as fast as you all would like, but certainly, we hear you tonight, and we will, staff will get back to you with some follow-up next steps. Next item, Ron Schaefer.
Thank you. I was just listening to the earlier proposal. The lady wanted $1,000 to make, put some kind of plants out or something to make something look beautiful, or at least to cause people to look somewhere. Anyway, I got a better proposal, I think. If you give me $200, I'll grow tomatoes, I'll grow my own plant, my own dirt, and I'll give it all to my neighbors, who I'm sure will appreciate it. But if I, I'm not very good at it. My daughter just sent me four plants, they all died. But if I need to come back to you, I'm sure your generosity will show up, and you'll resupply me with more money, and I'll try to grow more tomatoes. At least I'll be something beneficial out of this thing, rather than putting it in some kind of a vase by a building that nobody really gives a hoot about. So please think about my proposal, and I'm sure my address is in the phone book, you can send me a check. Thank you.
That is the end of our open forum this evening. Councilmembers in front of you, we have a consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, or any changes, if anyone sees fit.
I'd like to pull items K and L.
Please. Any other changes to tonight's consent agenda? Would you like to make a motion for everything but those two?
I sure will. I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through J and M through O.
I'll second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Those items carry. Moving on to consent agenda 7K, which is the resolution to accept donation for park beautification.
And I think I can cover K and L here all at once. I just wanted to take an opportunity to publicly thank the members of our community in Bolton, Mink for their generosity around downtown beautification, a lovely donation to address our Lakeside Park in Bolton, Mink for their springfling donation, which was a wonderful event last weekend, so. With that, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items K and L.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Moving on to our regular agenda this evening, item 8A is the PMA agreement.
Yes, we have a presentation by PMA regarding our new investment procedure that we're using PMA for. Do you want to take the, the mic?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Corey Boyer. I'm with PMA Financial Network, and I'll go through the presentation, and certainly if there's questions, feel free to holler, or I can answer at the end with whatever's most convenient. But I thought it'd be good to just take a few minutes and first of all, explain who PMA is, what our background is, and then we can kind of get into a little more detail as to what the proposal is that we're, is being considered this evening. PMA has been around, we're celebrating our 35th year. PMA only works in the public sector, so we've worked in the public sector throughout the Midwest for 35 years. There are really three different companies under the PMA, under common ownership. There's PMA Financial Network, that does a lot of the local government investment pool administration that I'll touch on a little bit. Prudent Man Advisors does a lot of our advisory work, whether it's in some of the pools that we advise on, or on separately managed accounts. And then PMA Securities is the third arm, where we can look at some different security options available to the city. Through these three entities, we have a lot of experience working in Minnesota. In 2007, we were hired by the League of Minnesota Cities to administer the 4M Fund Program, which, if you are not familiar with that program, it is a Minnesota municipal money market fund. It's structured specifically to meet the needs of municipal entities in Minnesota. So we work with about 420 different public entities throughout the state in the program. And the program has really evolved over, over the years, and PMA as a company has grown a lot over the years as well, and we currently have about $25 billion under administration as of the end of this first quarter. But when we look at the 4M Fund Program specifically, there are a lot of services in there in addition to investment programs. And so we've been meeting with the city to talk about a lot of these different programs, and how they might meet some of the investment needs for the city. And it really starts with one of the services that is available through the 4M Fund Program, which is our cash flow program. We work, like I said, with many public entities, and one of the programs that we work with is our cash flow program. My experience, I was a finance director for 13 years for Minnesota Cities, so I know city finances fairly well. And this program is perfectly structured to meet the needs of public entities, to help them kind of get a picture of what their investment needs are. You know, cities work in a budget world, where they have budgets, cities have capital plans, but it's bringing it all together to determine, what does all that mean from an investment standpoint? Sometimes those documents don't really meet the investment, or answer a lot of the investment question. So we have a cash flow program that does that. We've been working now with the city for about four months to develop a cash flow, and we have that in place. And so that's something that we'll be constantly monitoring, to start with on a monthly basis, to make sure that what we're projecting is meeting with actual results of the city. And so the goal with that is we're going to see, you know, looking at the liabilities of the city, and let's match up those investments with those liabilities. If there are some potential shortfalls that we're seeing, let's, let's plan for those, identifying long-term investment potential. But really, the goal of that is we want to try to maximize investment yield wherever we can. And so as we look at the cash flow, it's going to allow us to, what we call stratify those reserves. And so when we talk about that, we look at what's really short-term in nature when we look at that cash flow, what does the city need over the next three, six, nine months to fund the operation? You know, what's in that intermediate bucket, where we're looking maybe three months out to two or three years? And what's long-term? You know, what are your core reserves that, from the cash flow, it's apparent you're not going to need to touch those for some time? Let's break those up into these different buckets, and let's use the different tools that are available to maximize the city's reserves in each of these. And so as we look at, kind of short-term is where you utilize your local bank, obviously, for those operating dollars. The 4M Fund is going to provide a competitive money market program that the city can utilize for those short-term dollars. A lot of different fixed rate options available for those intermediate dollars, and a lot of times, those might be bond proceeds, or different things that you might need over the next year, 15 months. And then the long-term reserves, and that's kind of what we're here to talk about tonight, is as we look at the long-term reserves, what makes the most sense for the city? And so as we looked at it, looking at the long-term reserves, the cash flow seemed to indicate there were some core dollars that wouldn't need to be touched for some time. And so as we look at those dollars, we often will recommend a separately managed account, because a separately managed account on behalf of the city allows for more active management of those dollars by a professional investment advisor. The first thing we'd like to point out, when you hire an investment advisor, they have a fiduciary duty to the city. And so it becomes more of, they're an extension of your finance department. They have to act on the best, on the best interest of the city, on your behalf. And so the advisor would be, have that fiduciary duty to the city, to manage those core reserves to the best interest of the city, and to maximize that return. In addition to that, then, there's the full suite of services that would be available to the city with a separately managed account. The one thing that we really like to focus on is investment policy review. A lot of times, the market's changing constantly, and so there might be some things that we can bring to the city as a recommendation on that policy, that will tweak it a little bit, and maybe open up some avenues for additional investment options available by statute that the city can take advantage of, that maybe right now isn't included in your policy. So we're always looking at that as we work with cities. The cash flow, again, it's going to allow us to customize that portfolio, and that's really the key component, because every city has a different investment policy. Statutes are all the same, but every city has a different investment policy, and we want to look at that cash flow specifically to customize that portfolio. There are also, it's a very robust reporting engine that we have available to the city. It's going to allow for a lot of comparison, it's going to allow to bring in investment activity into the city's accounting system to free up a lot of staff time, so you're not constantly reconciling investment activity. It's going to be done for you as part of the reporting structure. We will have regular meetings with the city, as much as they might want. A lot of times, it's either a market update, or a portfolio update, or a combination thereof, because the market's always changing, we want to keep the city abreast of what's happening, and maybe what those market changes are doing to their portfolio. There's also going to be a separate custodian. We, as an advisor, the advisor cannot have control of those securities, that has to be held in a custodial, custodial relationship. You're going to have a custodian, you'll have the advisor, they're communicating all the time. Whenever there's trades in the account, they have to reconcile those with the custodian. Management of investment risk, there's a lot of different types of investment risk. By hiring an advisor, you're hiring someone that can help manage all those risks that the city might face when they're looking at their investment portfolio, whether it's credit risk, reinvestment risk, a lot of different things that they're constantly monitoring when they're working in the markets. And the final thing, too, with, with the advisory account, is it provides a more transparent fee structure. This is often a question, as far as how is this structured? What's, what are we doing differently now versus what's being proposed? As we look at your, or the advisory agreement that you have, Exhibit B spelled out, what that fee structure was. With an advisory relationship, what you're basically paying is a percentage of your assets under, under management. And so you, based on whatever the cash flow is dictating, what's, what makes sense for that long-term portfolio, that's what's going to drive what that fee is. Currently, the city's working with a couple different broker-dealers. Broker-dealers have a fee as well, it's just structured differently. They are on a per-transaction basis, so they don't have a fee based on assets under management, they're just commission-based, based on each trade that they're doing for the city. So the city's already incurring fees, it's just that they're not disclosed to the city, they're just on a per-transaction, the city does not even see what those are. So it's just a different type of structure, but we think this is nice, because it is more transparent. The city knows what they're going to be paying based on that portfolio size. This would only apply to the funds that would be in a long-term portfolio, they would not apply to the liquid dollars, or any intermediate reserves that we might be working with, like bond proceeds, things like that. The other, I don't know if you can see, this is kind of small print, I apologize. Another critical part of it is in performance. You know, knowing what the fee is, you want to compare that to how, how is the advisor performing? We do comply with GIPS, which is the Global Investment Performance Standards. What that basically means is our performance has to go through an audit. What it does is it allows one advisor to be compared with other advisors, and it allows the advisor to show their performance versus a benchmark. And so this becomes a critical piece, because if you're paying a professional investment advisor, you want to make sure they're beating the benchmark that's out, that's out in the industry. And so this shows our performance, this is based on our one-to-five-year composite, which basically means the portfolio consists of securities anywhere from a one-to-five-year maturity. And this is compared, then, to the Merrill Lynch one-to-five-year U.S. Treasury benchmark. The top line on this shows our performance, the third line down shows The top line on this shows our performance, the third line down shows the benchmark. So this indicates, if you look to the far right since inception, with our advisory group, they are running about 0.64% over the benchmark. So again, that becomes critical, because that's what you're paying. That's the benefit to the city of doing this, is you're getting that increased performance, offsetting that fee, but also maximizing the return for the city. The bottom line is we want to get as, the maximum return we can safely for the city. So to summarize, you know, it's been a lot of fun working with the city, working with getting the cash flows prepared. You know, as we looked at it, we've really seen opportunity to do a lot of work here with the city. We'd really enjoy that opportunity. We utilize that cash flow to stratify those reserves, to try to take advantage of the tools available to us. The main thing we're looking at, anytime we look at investment policy, it's always safety first, then liquidity, then yield. And so we want to make sure we're looking at a high-quality portfolio for the city, but also improving the liquidity. Right now, the city's probably got more CDs than anything else in their portfolio. CDs are not a bad investment, either are callable agencies, but if you would need to tap into any of those early, there are usually some type of a penalty or a market adjustment that comes from an early sale. And so we want to try to avoid having to sell any of those illiquid types of investment products early. So the cash flow is going to help with that. But also through more diversification in the portfolio, we can improve that liquidity as well. So that would be one thing that we'd really focus on. Again, the cash flow would help avoid some of that asset liability risk, where you might have the liability and not the liquid funds to pay for it. We want to avoid that whenever possible. And then just actively manage that portfolio to meet kind of the city's evolving needs. Cities change all the time, we want to make sure that we have the ability to evolve with it, so. So with that, Council, I will certainly answer any questions you might have.
Questions? I have a number of, a number of questions. And maybe it's more for Patrick. Is this an additional service, or are we, so a new service provider that is replacing an existing service provider, or is this an additional layer of advisement that we haven't traditionally had?
It'll replace many of the traditional ones that we've used in the past. Again, this is a little more sophisticated investment procedures and ways we used to do things, the way we used to do things through Wells Fargo and Midwest One. And like Corey said, heavily in CDs. But this will, and the important part about this one is we've never had an investment advisor, at least to my knowledge here, be able to give us that cash flow. And the cash flow is important, is the most important part of this. Particularly, and I'll give you the example, when, say, we sell bonds this year to, you know, build the water infrastructure as well. We know that those bills for that infrastructure won't come all at once, so let's take advantage of taking that chunk of money and cash flow that out so that we can maximize the investment return, because we won't be using that, you know. A project like that, maybe a two-year project, but we're not going to be, why put that money in a savings account for two years at, you know, a very low rate? Let's maximize that and get the return. And down the line, that will help us not have to maybe possibly get a small return so we won't have to raise water fees or taxes. So, yeah, before we had U.S. Bank and Northland Securities and Wells Fargo, so it was really kind of a disjointed, three-different approach. This is, brings it all back into one with PMA, who I'm familiar with from my past, that gives us a good product and good advice and good investment services.
Is it a change, you're not the custodian, is it also a change in the custodial arrangements? Or is that, does that stay where they are today? How does that transition?
Yeah, I mean, that would be up to the city. We can work with multiple custodians. I mean, we, we've worked with U.S. Bank, Wells Fargo, there's different custodians out there. We could work with the city, determine what would be the best fit on that.
Yeah, right now, we do a lot of work with U.S. Bank, and we'll just have to see what the new arrangements will bring forth.
Talk about compliance with our investment policy. Are there quarterly check-ins, annual check-ins of compliance to policy and the certification that happens? How do we?
Yeah, I will be asking PMA to give us a quarterly update on all our investments and all our compliances and anything that's associated with these investments. And then hopefully, when we have a finance director on board, that person will also be involved with us, but in a quarterly report on budget performance and things like that, this will be included with that.
Okay, so we get?
That was my question.
Oh, yeah, so we get, so we get some information quarterly?
Yes, yes.
Is that spelled out in the agreement down to, I know there was, there's some reporting that is implied in the agreement, I wasn't sure if we were specifically asking for compliance.
Particularly was in the agreement, if I remember reading it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, we generally don't put that level of detail in it. It would kind of be at the discretion of the city. You know, we're open to whatever, whether it be a face-to-face or a conference call, whatever they might want. Every city's a little different, how often they want to talk to their advisor and get those updates, but certainly we can work whatever.
And I believe that a quarterly report is a good time period. And at least twice a year, it'll be face-to-face.
And then the magic is in the benchmark. Do we define the benchmark? Is the benchmark set for all of your portfolio cities? What does that look like?
Yeah, so it generally is set by city. Some cities might not have as strong of a cash flow, and so they're, they may not be in a position to invest as long. So you'd want to compare that to a shorter benchmark. For a city that has very stable cash flows, that has a longer-term possible duration of their investments, then we would have that discussion at probably a one-to-five or a one-to-10, whatever might make more sense.
Is that something our investment committee would be working to, as, to establish here's the appropriate benchmark and evaluate?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I just think that's a critical component to the agreement and how we're measuring success. And to your point, our portfolio is not the same as another portfolio and...
Yeah, and I agree that if you're not meeting the benchmark, there needs to be a discussion of why you're not meeting that and what's going on. So it is a critical piece of it.
And also choosing what the benchmark is, so that we're setting realistic expectations.
Correct, yep.
I'm a little bit hogging the mic, I do have a couple more questions, if you will allow me. So fee structure. Are we, do we have an ability to compare fees with other relatable cities? I just, I don't have, I, from where I sit, don't have a good grasp if that's reasonable.
We can certainly do that, but I would, I don't know how many Minnesota cities you have using your services in this manner. I'm sure that all the fees are similar to what ours would be. So in order to get other fees beyond PMA, we'd have to do a little bit of homework to try to figure out what those are.
I would assume they're publicly available, so I would just like to see us go through that exercise, just as a fiduciary responsibility, that we're reasonable in fees. Part of my question was, what's the budget impact? And I understand that because this is a change, it's hard to quantify.
Right.
You have a minimum in the contract of $15,000. Is there an estimated of year-one fees of what that might be?
Compared to what we do now?
Well, it'd be nice to know compared to what we do now, but...
Yeah, I don't know what the, what the fees are for what we have now. But, and part of what we're doing here is we're hoping the performance outstrips that, so.
I appreciate it's an apples-to-oranges comparison to what we're doing now, so I'm not as worried about that. It's more just making sure that our fees are appropriate, given the municipality of our size and investment portfolio.
Yeah, we're looking at that, sure.
I think that would be helpful.
Mike, and you know what I'll say, and I, yeah, certainly do that. And I know this is going to be very similar to what you'll find out there. The tiers may be different or what have you, but from an overall standpoint, it'll be similar. We have a pretty standardized fee. This is pretty much the standard for most entities of your size or larger. And so it's something that oftentimes will respond, maybe for a request on a proposal or what have you, and so this would be our standard proposal that we put together. And I have found historically that it's pretty comparable with what's out there, but certainly take a look and see what else, what else is out there.
I may add to my request list, it's more of a request of staff. You mentioned reconc, or kind of pulling transactions into our accounting system. I'd just like to see from staff what the planned controls are to make sure that that is, appropriate, reconciled, and that we're, from a staff perspective, prepared for that and changing our procedures accordingly. That's as potential to be a much different type of transaction than what we've done in the past. So we'd just like to hear from staff.
I assume most of it's still going to be a journal entry type of situation, where it's manually reviewed, and I don't think we automate those functions as far as investments go.
If they're not automated, then I have less concern.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe our software system has the ability to automate those transactions. I'm sure it's going to be individual reconciliation and any journal entries or any other kind of things that will happen manually, at least for now.
And I say not concerned, just because if it's manual, it's coming in through our traditional review process.
Yeah, and we would work with city staff to kind of develop at least what that journal entry would look like, whether it comes in automatically or we provide it in the form of journal entry that they would manually input, but they would drive that as to how they want it to come in.
It should follow the regular, like our bank reconciliations on a monthly basis. It should, the investment should have hands-on and eyes-on review of those reconciliations on a regular basis.
Other, on a positive, on a positive note, I support this overall structure move. I think it makes sense, given our portfolio, and there's an opportunity to maximize cash flow. So overall, on a concept, I support this tonight. Other questions or clarifications that we should, any questions anyone has? I think you covered them. This is a, potentially a very large transaction, or a large contract for us. Bridget, have you had an opportunity to review the agreement and?
Yes, your honor, I have reviewed the agreement and provided some comments, which were incorporated into a revised version of the agreement for the council consideration.
I guess the question's up to council at this point, if we're, if you're comfortable to approve tonight, if you'd like to table and have some of these questions come back for future approval. What are your thoughts?
Are we up against any kind of a deadline or anything as far as other investments or?
No, I don't, I don't think we're up against a deadline. I mean, obviously, we have to look at what CDs, but that's, we're going to be doing that anyways, maturity rates and dates, I should say. So no, I don't think there's a deadline, but I think the earlier, the better as far as performance of our funds go.
I prefer tabling, especially while we gather the additional information. Councilwoman Bryston just said she preferred a table to gather the additional information. I would like to see the fee comparison of some other communities. I just feel like that's an important part of our due diligence, especially because it's a change in structure from what we've had today. I too would prefer to table to have that detail in front of us.
Overall, you know, I think it's going to be a good agreement, but there's nothing wrong with studying it further, there's no question about that, so.
I will entertain a motion to table.
I'll make a motion that we table the agreement discussion until, what, the next regular meeting. I'll second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain, and we're going to table this. We do need to define, Sam, you said till our next council meeting, correct?
Till our next regular meeting, which we have a workshop. Yeah, right, yeah, we have a workshop in between, I believe.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Members of council, next item on our agenda, St. Clair Brookes Concept Plan Review. I believe when we go through this, Donovan's going to walk us through first. We'll take a first round of council questions that council may have with Donovan. I know the applicant, Mr. Jensen is here, and we'll invite him to the podium after council's done a first round of questions. Let you say a few words, and then have, see if there's any council questions of the applicant specifically, and then we'll bring the conversation back to council. Donovan, you want to kick us off?
Thank you. Mayor members of council, I'd like to present the Concept Plans subdivision review of the St. Clair Brookes project. This is located on the northwest quadrant of Tenet Brook Golf Course. It's a portion of this blue parcel that's on Fenway, with ag uses across the street, city-owned parcels to the north, and single-family homes to the south. The concept plan review is unique because in this case, there's not a clear up or down decision that the council offers. The purpose of it is to informally advise the developer as promptly as possible of the extent to which the proposed subdivision generally conforms to city standards. Information provided, including comments, does not constitute a formal decision, does not convey any legal development rights to the applicant. The zone code specifies there are three criteria in which concept plans are reviewed by both Plan Commission and City Council. This is the project acceptability in relation to comprehensive plan, development regulations, and utility availability. So now let's dig into the actual specifics. So this 17-lot proposed project on 16 and a half acres. What you see here on the west side is Fenway Avenue. There are wetlands on the site, a couple outlots contain wetlands. This, the property is zoned, and there's two connections to Fenway, shown here. A southern, a little southern leg, and then also a northern leg. You know, for, for concept plans, there is a pre-submital meeting held, which happened on May 7. In this case, city staff did provide a series of comments on, on the project, on the process, talking about easements that will be required, different types of regulatory approvals. Also relate, information related to wetlands. And also, in general, there are certain fees required. And the, so after, after that, looking at the plan, looking at comprehensive plan, the proposed property, proposed subdivision is about one unit per acre, where the comp plan density is about 3.6 units per acre. This is not uncommon, since there are a number of wetlands on many, on many sites in Forest Lake. The single-family land use is consistent with the plan. What's not so orderly is the fact that there is no direct access to city water and sewer for this property, which that's a large part of the comprehensive plan, is that having an orderly development of land. Next, for development regulations, it's a 15,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The lot sizes vary from about 15,000 to over 1.5 acres. Some lots need to be reconfigured to reach that minimum, one lot needs to be reconfigured to meet that minimum area where there's a temporary cul-de-sac proposed, as well as nine lots need to be widened to meet the 80-foot lot width minimum. With the street design, there are two proposed connections to Fenway. Fenway is, in the comprehensive plan, is a collector road. There isn't a specified separation between connections. However, it is some, some concern to staff with the close proximity with these connections. This is, eventual build-out would be a four-lane road, where the connections of this proximity are not, or don't represent the, you know, the safety that the city would want as far as vehicles entering and leaving the roadway. There are wetlands on the site, as I mentioned. At the Plan Commission review, the developer said he had a wetland delineation. I believe he meant a wetland identification, since there's been no formal process as far as application, and then technical review for delineated wetland. Currently, Fenway Avenue in this section is a gravel road. If we look at the aerial, basically, you know, the city asphalt ends right about here, right just below the roundabout on Fenway. And so there's an area here of gravel. The city can require, will require, the paving of Fenway within the project area. And also, you know, looks like we would require the paving of Fenway in this gravel area in order to not have that mixed maintenance between... to not have that mixed maintenance between paved, city paved road, gravel, then asphalt pavement. The, the, as I mentioned, public water and sewer are not directly adjacent. Staff has repeatedly asked applicant, Mr. Jamie Jensen, who's here this evening, for more information. This happened for a few weeks prior to the Plan Commission review on April 10th. In response, on the Friday before that Wednesday, after the staff packet had even been posted, Mr. Jensen did provide a page from the water plan, which shows a 12-inch line along Fenway north of the project, and said he will access that, which I'm not sure what that means. But, you know, the water would have to be extended down to the project for it to be a viable project. As well as, Mr. Jensen submitted a concept sewer plan, which shows a line running into the Met Council interceptor here, which is within this easement area, shown in the dash lines there, running north-south. And then also, one connection there and then another connection down here to serve these eight lots to the south. During the April 10th Plan Commission review, Mr. Jensen declared that the city engineer has no problem with the sewer line. However, I believe that's a mischaracterization of the city engineer's perspective, and included in your staff report, staff memo is about four paragraphs of reasons why the city engineer believes this is not a viable plan, as well as Mr. Jensen mentioned he had contacted Met Council staff. The staff he mentioned was a communication specialist, and I contacted the staff member who does receive these interconnection plans, and he had not spoken with Mr. Jensen. Therefore, the plan doesn't, it doesn't provide sanitary sewer availability is the basic point. To provide that, this road would have to be raised by about three and a half feet or more, with also building pads raised in order to have the gravity sewer serve all these lots. In addition, sanitary sewer lift station is required, and that is per Met Council policy. The Parks, Trails and Lengths Commission did meet and discuss the project and voted to recommend the city council accept a $2,500 cash payment per lot to satisfy the park dedication requirement. The, also during the Plan Commission review, the staff recommendation was denial due to the unavailability of utilities. The Plan Commission took another tact and voted to provide a series of comments and concerns to the city council, and these related to its compliance with some of the provisions of the comp plan. And then some also relate to a concern among Plan Commission about perhaps ways the city council, the city could be proactive about creating more residential lots. And for them, there's a great deal of uncertainty around, you know, how is that infrastructure extension funded, and also concerned about how the subdivision plan fits into the overall plan for surrounding properties, including the city property. So after that Plan Commission review, staff asked Mr. Jensen if he wanted to provide more information to provide, you know, a better review for council based on the Plan Commission feedback, and Mr. Jensen declined, and he didn't feel like it was necessary to provide more specific information at this stage. But however, staff disagrees with this perspective, since the main criteria that I believe is lacking is that utility availability, particularly the sanitary sewer. So at this point, it's the staff recommendation for council to deny the concept plan for St. Brooks. The reasons for this is that the plan does not provide a proper sanitary sewer depth along the entire lines, both lines. The location of manholes with proper depths at the western end of the sewer lines is not provided. Location of easement area for the sanitary sewer lift station, and then specific areas are not reserved for stormwater management. This is something that Mr. Jensen was alerted to last June when he first approached the city, and we still, you know, almost a year later, still see any area reserved for stormwater management. At this point, we have to take any questions from city council.
Any initial questions of staff before we hear from the applicant?
So the real issue is just the engineering is the problem right now. Is that what you're saying? I mean, as far as the sewer, storm sewer and that sort of thing?
Well, it's not particularly engineering, but it's having the basic foundation there that.
Well, that's what I meant by that.
Well, because it's still the concept phase, and, you know, for instance, I'm not saying we should deny the plan, you know, make a recommendation to deny based on, well, some of the lots are too narrow. You know, that can be rejiggered. But at this point, the, just, you know, I believe it's some basic engineering is not, has not been done in order to, you know, really provide, to my.
Well, that answered my question, so. That was all I had, Mar.
Other questions before we hear from Mr. Jensen?
So I just had a quick question, Donovan. When I was reading the memo and it talked about Met Council, and so I'm just curious, when it's a concept plan, do you need something in writing from Met Council for something like this in terms of the sewer and, or just the, it seemed like there was some confusion of what the Met Council said, so I'm just looking for some clarification.
Certainly, certainly. I'm not certain what they said. I reached out to the staff engineer who usually fields these applications, and we are not looking, you know, they're not a part of this right now.
Okay.
I mean, once we get into preliminary plat, you know, and then, you know, work, you know, there is an official application process that they need to have that approval to, in order to make this project work. But the policy for the Met Council is that basically the lines run away, the sanitary sewer lines run, you know, away from this interceptor line, and then a lift station then takes it, pumps it into a force main that runs back to the line, which that's missing in this concept plan. And that's, you know, it's a fundamental flaw, and to me, reveals that there hasn't been, you know, a Met Council review in a way that Mr. Jensen said, he said they have no problem with the plan. However, this shows that there, there was some conversation, and Mr. Jensen today did send, you know, an email to council reporting that they did receive record plans. So there's some basic information. You can see on this that there's, you know, the inverts for the pipes are there, which is kind of what you need to work with, with gravity sewer. But, you know, the other pieces, the presence of a lift station, you know, at least one isn't here, and that's an essential part.
I understand the questions around the sewer. I think I understand the question on the table related to sewer. I'm a little more unclear on water, and I know there's been a lot of conversations, so I just want to make sure I'm getting the most up-to-date version. I'm looking at the memo from April 5th that just is the applicant's confirmation that there will be access made on a Fenway. Have we seen a more extensive plan of what does that look like for water being brought to the site from that corner of where city's currently stubbed out?
No, I mean, what you have is what Mr. Jensen provided. I asked if he wanted to provide more. He declined. But water's not as much a concern, and this is something Ryan can speak to as well, because it's under pressure and it's more of a matter of just, of installing it, you know, paying for the installation, and that's a big piece because it runs, you know, there's about, you know, approximately 1,700 feet of roadway that this water line needs to run along on Fenway before he reaches the project.
Right.
But, but that's, you know, and then obviously, that, you know, the size of pipe to serve this project is smaller than what would be put in Fenway to serve, you know, all the properties to the south and west. But that's more of a, you know, those details can be finalized later. Is that correct, Ryan?
So a memo, March 2019, sent to the developer, this is what I had worded in that memo on Assistant Donovan. So the nearest city water facility is located near the intersection of Fenway Avenue and Headwaters Parkway. The project will be responsible for extending the service to the proposed plat, so we would take it to the south into the plat, right? But by being so far on the outskirts of our city water supply and pressure, and also the second, last sentence of that paragraph included, water modeling will have to be reviewed to determine if looping be required to meet adequate fire protection. That's what we don't know until we, or more to find on elevations and going through the water modeling process, to have adequate pressure at the end of the line.
Has there, is there any agreement, and I know that agreement is an agreement because this is all concept plan, but are parties generally on the same page around cost of that water line extension and who's paying for what, as well as the paving? Because I believe I heard you say that we would require the paving to go down to the southern border of the property. Is there, I know that that's been tossed back and forth, but I just don't know where we've landed on some sense of, are we on the same page? Is that still a significant amount to be reconciled in future phases? I think overall, this is just our opportunity to make sure everyone is on the same page and to talk about next steps going forward, and I'm just trying to get a sense of how much has been kind of, whether there's agreement or versus, and being clear on what still has to be discussed in the next phase.
Well, you know, after Mr. Jensen had submitted his concept plan, did request a statement of utility, you know, you know, what provisions he was going to make. And for me, at this concept phase, it could be something with regards to water, that, you know, I'll extend the Fenway line and, you know, work with city for, because there would be oversized charges. But, you know, Mr. Jensen did provide a narrative, and, but the word he used is that we will, seeing here in this last sentence, you know, we will access the Fenway line, and that's the extent of the conversation as far as, and of course, the water, this page from the city water study from 2014, you know, and these are, you know, it is early to talk about distribution of costs with that, but we're still very much in preliminary stage.
Any further questions of staff before we hear from Mr. Jensen? Mr. Jensen, you want to, I'm assuming you'd like to present tonight? You're under no obligation to, but wanted to give you the opportunity.
Yeah. Hi, Jamie Jensen, Firebird Inc. is the company putting this on St. Clair Brookes is the project. Your staff really doesn't want this to go forward. They're finding every possible reason for it not to go forward, and that's been very difficult for me to get through this. I'd like to show you, out of your subdivision rules, this is a concept plan, and there are a number of things. It says date and address of the applicant, date of the plan, scale of the plan, north arrow, these type of things. There's not a word about utilities in here at all. Concept plan doesn't involve drawing anything about the utilities, other than saying that they're there. So when we say, is there water? There's water in the area. Is there sewer? There's a sewer line there. So that, as far as concept is concerned, they're there. Can we use them? We don't know yet. We haven't done those things. But for a concept plan, they're both there, water and sewer are both there. So we'll be doing the engineering on that, but as far as Mr. Hart, you know, requiring inverts and elevations and lengths, and none of that is required at the concept plan because we haven't done it. It's very expensive to get the engineer and the surveyor to put all of this together, so we do that when it's time, but it's not part of the concept plan. Additionally, you'll hear that the problem with the utilities is something that Mr. Hart is harping on and has from the start. You don't hear those objections by your engineer. My engineer doesn't object, and the Met Council hasn't sent you a letter saying, this isn't going to work, or hasn't sent me a letter saying this isn't going to work, because I would have stopped right away. So I've got my engineer, your engineer, and the Met Council engineer all saying, yeah, we'll look at this, this looks like it'll work. And then we've got Mr. Hart who says, we don't have enough information, deny it. So, you know, I'm taking the professionals. They say, it looks like it'll work, you know, we need to go further on it. Fine, that's expected. To turn everything down because we haven't done step 16, we're only at step 1, you know, you haven't done step 16 yet, we're not to step 16 yet. So I'm, it's really frustrating to try and get through this through because it's such a good project, it's such a good location, it's residential, it's in the residential area you want it to be in, the city is expanding in that way, this would help move some of the utilities out there, all of that seems helpful, and yet I'm really fighting staff to get even step 1 and step 2 going. As far as the rest of it, I have been in touch with the Met Council, and Mr. Hart, in his note to you today, suggested that I had told an untruth to you, that I said that I had met with the council, but I hadn't really, because his person, Kyle Colvin, hadn't talked to me. And Mr. Colvin has been part of it. He was contacted by my engineer and immediately sent it over to Dan Chennard. Dan Chennard is a senior engineer who handles inverts, and that's the person I've been in touch with. So, and that's why I sent you that information today, because somebody says, I'm not telling you the truth, I'd better support that. So, and that's why you got those today. As far as the rest of it, I don't, I guess I want to ask you what else, you know, what else do you want to hear from me on this? The utilities, as far as I can tell, all work, but this is a concept plan, and I have to say, and I've said before, I've done dozens of these developments, and the concept plan takes about an hour, maybe two hours, for every city I've ever worked in. We go in and we say, what do you want to do? Looking at the north side of the golf course, how many lots? I don't know, looks like about 20. You know, where's the water? There is a sewer here, there's this. Okay, go. And then we move along. I'm in my fifth month of concept plan with the city of Forest Lake, and we haven't even gotten started on the project. 10 the following year. And if everyone takes five months to get the concept, I'm imagining it's going to take two years before we get any further. You're going to end up with 15 on your plate all at one time. I would think that, I would hope that you would want to stream that a little bit, but as, you know, as I say, it's been very frustrating for me on my side to do it. This is the last step before I can start the preliminary plat process. So as of tomorrow, I contact my surveyor and my engineer and everybody else and say, go now. Start doing your utility plan, start doing your surveying, everything, we move forward. Because today is just a, a concept with you guys is basically a meet and greet. There's no voting up or down on it. You don't, you don't, you know, accept or deny a concept plan. It's a discussion, and that, again, is frustrating because Mr. Hart is asking you to deny a concept plan, but you don't vote on a concept plan, so how do you deny it if there's no vote? So, I'm sorry, I'm starting to rant, it's just, it's, it's been a long time on what seems to be a kind of cut-and-dried project, a valuable beneficial project to the city. I hope it's beneficial to the city, I think it is. So if you have any other questions, otherwise, I got nothing else.
Madam Mayor, that's why I asked the question about the whole thing, is it boiling down to engineering? That's really what it amounts to, and I agree with that, you know, all he's doing is saying, look, this is what we're looking at, and if he can move forward, his engineers might tell him it's not possible, you know, and along the way, then we can work that out. I think so far, this has been a stumbling block that's been unnecessary, and that's just my opinion. And I think the project's a great idea. Whether or not it can work, I don't know. And you won't know that until your engineers get working on it. And so, my two cents worth is that, just the concept that he made of very plain, and I think he explained it very well, is that it's just a concept, it's just a picture of what could happen there. And so, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I, you know, the, the thing for me is I, I don't want to get in the way, you know, of development, but I do have some concerns as I look at this project largely with that infrastructure piece, you know, with the utilities piece. You talk about, here's an opportunity to move utilities in, but are we moving them in in the right way? You know, we've got land to the north, we've got land to the west, you know, ultimately opportunity for development there and sort of coming in and piecemealing, for me is the, is the term that I use, just for the sole purpose of this piece of the development of that area, concerns me. The other piece that concerns me is the road. I know that that was ultimately probably dedicated to be more of a four-lane type road. What was the term?
A collecting road.
The spacing, you know, the spacing of the two outlets, you know, from that development on, on that four-lane piece of property. And that, these are the pieces I'm kind of having a tough time coming to terms with. Is that I, I feel like, you know, we're not, we're, and, and I, again, I, I don't want to slow down development, I really want to be development friendly as a council member here, but I, I feel like we're not looking at this in a big picture way, right? You know, this is-
What else would you have us look at? And, and I mean that seriously. I, I want to answer these questions. When you talk about, there are only two utilities that are of any concern to us, water and sewer. Sanitary sewer, not storm sewer, sanitary sewer. The water is going to come down Fenway, 1,700 feet. I talked to your public works director. He had no issues with it, at least he didn't tell me he did. He, he sent me some information, I forwarded it to Donovan. Donovan says, the applicant continues to not answer the question. So I called back and I said, can you give me some more? And he says, what else, what else do they want? And I said, I don't know, Donovan Hart wants more information. And he says, well, I'll call him. I don't know if he did or not, but, you know, once again, I'm contacting the professionals here. They're not having a problem with it. So, and with the sewer line, the sewer is going to come out. What happens is, there are all the houses that go in, and their sewer, their sewage goes down far and goes out to the street and gets pumped back into the, into the Met Council interceptor. The reason is, the interceptor's only about seven feet underground. If it were 20 feet underground, we wouldn't be having this discussion, but it's only seven feet underground. So we got to kind of, that's what we've got. You know, so it, you know, if we had a 20-feet one, we'd use that, but that's what we've got. If I can bring it out to the cit, out to the street, 20, 25, 30 feet deep, and then pump it back into the interceptor, that helps not only my project, but all of the Taylor land and everybody down to 190th. Because then there's enough invert for everybody in the area. Okay? So that makes the most sense. So when you say, are we doing something, you know, spot, or are we doing something regional? Let's do something regional. Let's put it down 30 feet, which allows us to go out, I don't know, maybe a mile, you know, and then cover all of that area. That would be beneficial. So as far as that's concerned, that would be helpful for us to do that with the sewer. With the water, we can loop it, come in off of Fenway, come through the project and come back up and loop it up by the YMCA to the, to the 16-inch, because there's 12 inches on Fenway. We'd come down Fenway and come back with the 16 down from the, from the YMCA. So we would be able to loop all of that. And I will, I will say again, if I can buy the 17.4 acres I'm talking about, all of this becomes very easy. Right now, I'm working with just a limited number of lots, and so it's, it's not the grandiose project that, that would, you know, financially cover all of this. And then I think, I think part of what you're saying was, why should we extend things if there are no houses down there? Well, why should I put houses down there if there's no, you know, sort of like the chicken and the egg thing is, somebody has to act first. I'm acting in this case, will you join me? You know, will you, can we be partners on this? You bring what you want, and I'll pay for my part of it and all that kind of thing. So, but as far as concept, you know, we're just-
I think it boils down to the fact that what we're looking at is, is it a good idea to put houses there? You know, and it's just simply a concept, all the details and stuff have to be worked on. We're not approving the, the project, we're just approving the idea that, yeah, it'd be a good idea to put houses there. Maybe come along the line before the final approval that this can't work. Simple as that. But I, I, I think it's imperative that we give Jamie an opportunity to move forward with this thing, and at least we, Ray knows where he's at. That's just my opinion.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I don't totally disagree with Sam, but the, we've had orderly development coming south into the city, and to leapfrog down whatever the distance is puts a lot more uncertainty that we get it right this far down the path. If you, if you look at all of our developments in recent memory, they all have roads, they all have city sewer, and they have city water. And by leapfrogging, it puts, and I think all three of those need to be done in this day and age. People don't want to drive down dirt roads. They, they don't want to put septic systems in, and they would, I would think, expect city water being reasonably close to the city. And so the Planning Commission's big concern was this, the leapfrog that there was so much infrastructure that needed to go in, and, and the leapfrog down there. And one of them aptly pointed out, if we want to do development down there, maybe we should take a step back and see what it would run to say, to jumpstart development down there, but have a more thorough plan. So I, I think that, I don't want to speak for the Planning Commission, but I know that was, the motion was very strong that this was an uphill battle to make it viable to be able to develop there, and I would agree.
And, and I think, Paul, you said it, you said what I was trying to say, but you said it much better than I did.
Well, thank you.
You know. It, you know, I'm, I'm feeling like this needs to be part of a bigger infrastructure development down in that area. And, and is that doable simultaneously? I guess that's an unanswered question that I have.
I think the challenge here is almost. So is there water and sewer available onsite? Almost. And so you're not as large of a leapfrog plan that we have said no to in the past, but it's a little bit of a leapfrog. And so I think the concern that we're expressing is, we're not certain sitting here today on what we're able to do to provide that assistance of what's needed to make that what we need long-term.
Right, and I haven't asked her any.
And, and, and I'd like to go back to just the, the goal of this overall concept plan, and I know you're, you feel like you're hearing a lot of negative feedback. Thank goodness you're hearing it now of what those concerns are, and I think we're just all just trying to be very transparent of what are those concerns of this project moving forward. To your previously, previous point, and as Councilmember Husnick, you know, said very well, this isn't a binding conversation, this is a concept plan. I think we're just trying to get, what are the issues and challenges on the table? And one of your issues on wanting to move forward today is, we don't sit here with a funded plan and how we are going to participate in that, and that creates some uncertainty and risk. If you, if your project pays for it, that's a different answer. I suspect as we move forward, I'm not sure if you have a financially viable project that can pay for all of that, and I, it's the, our inability to kind of quantify, here is where we're, you know, today, prepared to invest. That's the uncertainty I just want to be crystal clear of as you, you know, as you proceed.
And how do we get to that point? Because we're talking, once again, sewer, water. That's all we're, that's all we're talking about, you know, sewer and water. The water's right there, you know, dig a trench, bring the water. It, you know, conceptually, it's not that difficult a, a deal.
And paving a four-lane road, right? Or what potentially could be a four-lane road, right? It's building that-
Okay.
-defining what that street is going to be, and how do we stage that out appropriately?
Okay.
We're not going to have all of those answers tonight, but I, I think it's important you know that we also don't have those answers tonight.
Right, no, certainly, yeah.
And there's a lot of, you know, a lot of questions. You know, Planning Commission, I think Councilmember Black penned the longest motion ever of his seven detailed points. He did a really good job. It was masterful to watch, actually. Of here are the concerns. I agree with those concerns, and we don't need to have those worked out tonight, but I want you to know that those are the concerns, and-
Those are the concerns on every development all the time, that there's nothing new there. So, yeah, we, we address those every time one of these comes up.
Yes.
So, you, do you want me to go forward?
If I may, just to add a couple of things here. First of all, the notion that we don't want this project is a false one. Staff has been working very hard with any developer and every developer that comes in, and we do not have those kind of opinions, what we should or shouldn't do. It's, each project stands on its own merit. Second of all, the concept plan here, the reason we have a concept plan and concept meetings is really to save the developer long-term money and funds so that they don't start to do the engineering and the investment, that something that they won't be successful or we cannot approve in the long run. So that's the concept. For example, outside the water and sewer, there's no stormwater plan here in front of, on this, on this concept. That's a big part of that concept, so that's, that's why we do the concept plan. And as far as bringing water and sewer to this area, it's been the city's policy, as I understand it, that that's all on the developer, that we are not a partner in bringing water and sewer to a development or paving the roads that are necessary to get to a development. So, yeah, there was a concept that, and I agree that we should look at it, extending some of that for future economic development, but that's not going to be answered today or probably by the end of the year. We have to figure out what that is, where, where the best bang for our buck is and what locations it should be. So this development, if, if you approve it, that's fine, but there's going to be a lot more work on the applicant's part to understand that he's going to have to put the water and the sewer in, the stormwater, and pave the road and a bike, a trail to these developments.
Right, and, and I have addressed that in the past. We have 19 lots coming, you know, on the plan, so we'd bring a four-inch main down. Now you probably want a 12-inch main, but I don't need a 12-inch main for 19 lots, I need a four-inch. So do you want me to dig up the road and put in a four-inch, or do you want to put in a 12-inch now, or a 16-inch?
It's been explained in the past that if, if the city wants a 12-inch main, they will, you know, charge for the four-inch main and cover the cost of the upsize. I think, think that's right, Ryan, is what we do.
We follow 10 state standards, and our development code, eight inches is required. Anything over, above that is considered oversizing. So they get a credit through back through the development area charges of the sewer and water. At a minimum, all gravity sewer pipe would be eight inches. All water main would be eight inches. Force main, we'll review that individually, because if you did put a lift station and force main in back, yeah, you would be responsible for the size of that force main to serve the property, but obviously we look at what that size would be to develop the full area. So some other things, just so we're saying factual here, as what's presented here and why we've, you know, outlined some of the items and talked with the applicant is their proposed 17 lots. Right now, as if this moved forward, they would instantly lose five lots and be down to 12. Because on the north leg, the shallow, or the last manhole, sewer manhole is 4.4 feet. Our standard is eight feet, because even by the time you get to the house, you're going to lose another 1.2 to 1.4 feet. Everything's going to freeze in that. Okay? That's why then you would have to back the line back, and you would lose four lots instantly on the north side. One lot for sure on the south side, maybe, maybe another, I don't know. But again, there's, maybe that's where he puts the stormwater ponds. Follow the comprehensive sewer plan. We have a lift station proposed on the west side of Fenway Avenue. You could bring gravity down to that and then pump it back with one connection to the force main. And you could continue going north and south with future applications. But that, that's what our standards are and code is and what we follow for every single development.
And I'd follow whatever your requirements are.
What's the lift station into? When I tell them, you got to go 10 feet deeper, we do have over, over depth credit too. So we did that with Headwaters, seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th, 11th edition. We dropped that lift station another, almost seven feet to serve all the way to the west border, right there. But that's why you have the sewer and water area charges mechanisms to pay back that oversizing, over depth credit.
Very good.
But Fenway Avenue is your question mark.
Right.
Driving it tonight, it was bad.
It's bad.
So.
Other questions of Mr. Jensen?
It just seems that all those things can be worked out as you go here because this is nothing more. And as far as Paul's comment about the leapfrogging, this project's inside the Musa line, and as far as I'm concerned, that, that should be a viable project, especially on, on a particular property that it's on. It's inside of that property, it's already a golf course, and so there's not going to be any change, or it's not, it's not going to affect on their property. So I could, I disagree with Paul on that, and I think we're complicating this thing beyond where we have to. The idea, as far as I'm concerned, is, is it a good idea to put houses there? If it is, then we got to get into the logistics of figuring out how we can do that. Just my comment.
Any other questions of Mr. Jensen tonight? Thank you.
Okay.
Bring conversation back to council. Any further questions of staff? This is on our action item agenda, so I will entertain a motion or further discussion. What's council's, council's wish?
What, Donovan, what, I mean, I, I think I'm clear on this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What more do you need from Mr. Jensen to move this beyond the concept plan?
I, I believe what's needed is the four bullet points within the recommendation section that involve basic information about the sanitary, sanitary line, lift station, and, and areas reserved for stormwater management. It's early to do specifics as far as, like the size of a stormwater pond, all that can be answered later. But in this case, it, it seems like, and just Ryan, you know, with his testimony there, confirmed that, you know, he sees six lots going away. You know, to me, that, you know, to actually have a plan that is viable requires more of these, you know, more, you know, additional items. The, and of course, I'll reconfirm what I started off with, which is, you know, the Plan Commission, I mean, City Council is going to, you know, make a motion, they'll say yea or nay at this point. Mr. Jensen can, as you mentioned, immediately go, you know, start preliminary plat, you know, submittal, you know, tomorrow. So this isn't anything that's around the, you know, this doesn't stop the project. And that's not my intention with the, you know, the recommendation of denial to stop the project. And I can answer many of the things he said regarding, you know, how long it's been the concept phase, and much of that related to just getting an acceptable plan to review that included just lots simply on the project, on the land he controls, not on other people's property. In this case, it's the city property. But, you know, I believe it would, it would not be a, it'd be something of a dereliction of duty as a staff member when, when the code says, these concept plans are reviewed for, on development standards, comprehensive plan, and utility availability. And when there's that much, you know, concern raised by the city engineer regarding basics utility availability of sanitary sewer, I don't see any other choice to make, but then to recommend that it needs to be, you know, severely worked over so that there's a viable plan there.
So can those determinations be made in that next phase?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, I mean, you know, as, yeah, I mean, as Councilmember Husnick referred to, I mean, that's all, yeah, many things are worked out. I mean, I mentioned, you know, narrow lots, I mentioned, you know, one lot of, you know, not adequate size because of a temporary cul-de-sac, and so, and, you know, wetland alienation, it needs to happen, and, you know, this is, those are going to change the lot lines. Those will all be, you know, figured out in the, you know, during preliminary plat design. design. But the, you know, but it's, but to me, at this point, because so many things are, remain unanswered, that, you know, that's, you know, that's the staff recommendation.
Mr. Jensen, do you believe that with what you've heard potentially could happen as a result of this next phase, losing a significant number of lots, that this is a viable project ultimately? Do you still feel that way?
I believe that Mr. Goodman's comment was that there would be lots lost if there was not a lift station put in. And so, a lift station will be put in. I, I don't, I don't see the project going forward without a lift station. I think that's a, a minimum, so I'm anticipating that. So, there would be no lot, I would have him confirm with you, there would be no loss of lots if there's a lift station. Now, the lift station is either a nineteen-lot lift station or a lift station for the region, seventeen or however, you know, I, I thought I saw nineteen, and you mentioned seventeen. So we can either put in one that serves, you know, a handful of lots, or we can put in a lift station that serves the region. And, and I'm sorry to keep saying this, if I were able to purchase the seventeen acres, that brings sufficient weight to the whole thing to make it all make sense financially. Right now, it's put in a, a lift station for seventeen lots, which just helps me, but it doesn't, you know, doesn't help anybody else, and, and if we have this opportunity to help everybody else, why don't we do that? So, yeah, I don't, I don't expect to lose the lots because we will have a lift station. Thank you.
To me, this comes down to managing the uncertainties, and I have been burned in the past by being enthusiastic about a concept plan that I thought would, on paper, sounds fantastic, or in concept, sounds fantastic, but when we get into the nitty-gritty, staff is pointing out concerns that ultimately do need to be addressed. And tonight, I have a challenge in giving the gold seal approval of a concept when there's fundamental elements of the concept where we're still not on the same page. The good news in that is that those questions can be answered, and should Mr. Jensen choose to proceed, can answer those things and work those things out, but I don't have a clear path to that sitting tonight, and so for that reason, I am going to make a motion that we deny the concept plan tonight, and...
A concept plan is not voted on.
Point of clarification to staff, I...
It's not voted on.
But I, so, but I believe that this is the official means of which council expresses an opinion, which council is asked to give an opinion on a concept plan.
You have the, the opinion or the right to approve, so I don't know how you'd approve it without taking a vote on it.
It is non-binding, and this is, does not prohibit the applicant from proceeding...
Correct, and doesn't mean that...
...ending an application.
The concept can't come back next week with any more information. This also doesn't mean that if you want to approve the concept plan tonight, that's fine, and everything will be worked out later, but the only difference is, is the, the dollar clock starts ticking to the applicant where it really doesn't in the concept as much. So, I mean, if we want to spend, the applicant wants never approved, and we're going to have to deal with all of these outstanding issues, there's, there's an impact.
I also think that one of the frustrations of the applicant has been a lack of certainty, and I think getting council, so Planning Commission gave their opinions on the public record, stated their reasons. I think there's value in council also doing the same tonight, of the gut check, what are the issues on the table? And so I will go back to my motion. I would like to make a motion that we deny the concept plan and advise Mr. Jensen to work with staff on either reconciling those areas of discrepancy, or also reminding Mr. Jensen, he does have the ability to move forward with a project plan despite the results of tonight's concept plan.
I'll second.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will just, add another point. The city wants to be a good partner to developers, but we need to be on the same page of what next steps look like, and what does that process look like? We, there's, I'll leave it at that. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm also gonna vote no on this, and it's not because I don't like the project. I think that the city needs to take a half step back and say, "What are we willing to do if, if we want a spur development down there?" And, and that's why, is I, because I'm not sure what we want to do or what would it take.
And, and I would echo that, and tried to articulate that, but again, Paul, you did a much better job than I did. As you know, this feels like it's part of a, a much bigger picture for me, and that, that road is still a stumbling block, in, in addition to the bullet points, that road is still a stumbling block for me. But I, I too, you know, you know, I want to see us try to make this work, but, but as you said, Mayor, being, you know, developer in the city needs to be on the same page.
Any other comments? With that, I'll call the, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, Chestnut Creek Development Agreement Amendment. Donovan, this is also yours?
Yes. So Chestnut Creek is our, the city's newest large development. It was, it's a total of two ornate lots, with construction of the city infrastructure initiated in 2016. However, since that time, in which, you know, many, many homes have been built, roads have completed. This is the, the infrastructure, I mean, on the subdivision just off Harrow. Here's the original final plat showing, here's Harrow here, and one connection with roads extending to the north, and to the south, and to the west, where this would be a Phase Two, which has not been, which had preliminary plat approval, which expired. But this is where all the city water and sewer pipes actually run through here, into Gladstone, here. And so, in this project, homes were built, however, the, the developer missed deadlines related to public infrastructure construction, including eternal lane off of Harrow, some corrections with the public infrastructure that was built. And that deadline was August 31st, 2017. We tried to work with the developer multiple times. Ryan actually has been really diligent about seeking new plans, constructing schedule to get things built. Also, there's a deadline upcoming for the final lift, or the final, the wear course for the asphalt. So currently, there's asphalt there, but it's what they call the, the wear course. And so the final asphalt has not been installed. And per the development agreement from 2016, you know, this deadline was to be August 31st of this year, or when ninety percent of the homes were completed. I count about sixty percent of the homes completed there, about sixty-five homes constructed and, and finished, or at least a foundation established. And the, also upcoming is a letter credit expiration. And this is what's providing the urgency right now. That letter credit expires on June 15th of this year, roughly a month from now. And, you know, the letter credit is something that the city requires to ensure that the public infrastructure is constructed. And so if we reach a time of the, the letter credit expiring, the city has to make a hard choice and actually cash in that letter credit to construct these improvements, to make sure they, they build. Or otherwise, the city loses any sort of recourse with the developer to actually have that infrastructure constructed. So part of this is that, you know, staff has informed the developer that, that letter credit needs to be renewed, maybe for a year. And also what we propose, and our city attorney, Bridget, has prepared a Development Agreement Amendment. This would extend the, the deadlines for both building the public infrastructure and the corrections, as well as putting another date of, during the month of June of next year, next spring, to, to do that, that final course of asphalt. And so, and so the, before you, what, what staff is asking is that council authorize the city to enter into a Development Agreement Amendment, you know, a new contract with the developer to extend these, these, these deadlines, and essentially provide extra time so that the, the work can be done. My conversations with the developer, who's not here tonight, is that, you know, they're willing to do this, and they, they have full intention of complying with this August 1st deadline for, for the summer construction of the public infrastructure. But this provides that the certainty that it will get done, or the city will, you know, declare the developer in default and then, and take corrective actions. At this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the city council.
Donovan, I have a quick question, and you might have mentioned this, and I might have missed it, but is there specific reasons why they missed the deadlines? It seems, it seems like this happens a lot. I'm just curious if, if it's just natural...
How much time do you have?
Got it.
I mean, you know, there's a long history. I mean, may Ryan, you want to provide a little summary there? No, okay, Ryan doesn't want to provide, I'm gonna be on the spot.
I mean, you don't have to be specific, but I mean, are they, for reasons that, like, they, it just, that's what happened, like, not intentional?
Yeah, I can't point to any specific act of God, other than, I don't think lots have sold like they've wanted to.
Okay.
The, you know, they, they did, you know, it was a pretty major construction. I was out there as they were digging the sewer, it was about twenty-five feet deep, right next to Gladstone there, on the western side. I mean, it was a canyon, very impressive. But it's, you know, we, the, the act of, you know, our other recourse here is declare the developer in default, and that's a pretty severe act. And so the, you know, the city's avoided trying to do this, and this is the latest attempt to avoid doing that. But we're also, I think, reached the end of our patience as far as, we need to get it done.
Right.
Sorry, Ryan, I interrupted you.
Maybe just give the project benefit of the doubt. They had to make a significant investment to extend sewer and water all the way across the two potential phases of the property to get to the east side, where they wanted to start Phase One off of Harrow Avenue. So that was their choice, but they had to bring the trunk line sewer and water all the way from the west to the east. And then the utility work basically took them up to the first winter, then it kind of cut off for construction until the next year. So maybe some of the scheduling and the time of the year had an effect in that, but then, again, related probably to lot sales at the end.
So, and I ask that just because of the previous conversation, that this obviously is a learning curve for some of us, that that's why we want to make sure when we're in the concept phase of something that we have it all worked out, so that when they run into those unforeseen...
Yes, and, and this was also kind of a, this project was a post-it trial for the reasons why the city wanted to retain that public infrastructure design for these projects. And, you know, council agreed and, you know, recently passed that. So, that's also part of the picture, is that we, we learned that, you know, the city needed to take a more active role in design as, as well as construction scheduling with these, with these projects.
Thank you.
Questions of Donovan? Not hearing it, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd recommend that this council approve the first amendment to the Chestnut Creek Development Contract.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? With that, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Item 8D, Approval of Local Forty-Niners Labor Agreement, which has, council members have sitting in front of you, and I believe was also sent under email cover. Patrick?
Correct. This is a redline version of the Forty-Niners contract that shows you where the changes are. A lot of housekeeping items in, in here that we cleaned up language, but the, the larger portions of this contract is, the first is that we reorganize the Public Works Department and shift around titles and positions to better reflect not only operations now, but for the future, to better have some backup supervisory capabilities. As we go down the line, that was probably the biggest sticking point in this contract. The contract went to me, to a mediator. We had two mediation sessions, we worked that out. Everybody still likes each other, so that's a good thing. There are no really, no really yelling, screaming, or angry, so that was, that was positive. It was handled in a very good way by both sides. And of course, the other is wage increase for the next three years. It's a three-year contract, which is good. It gives us a three-year of not having to worry about renegotiating or labor peace, and, and that's always a good thing, and it's actually what I would prefer on all the contracts. And so far, with the AFSCME contract we settled for three years, this will be a three-year contract, and that'll hopefully be the standard from now on, is what we try to, to get in place. This calls for a two percent increase on January 1st of this year, and a two percent increase on July 1st, which basically is a three percent net increase. And then the following years, a two, in 2020 is a two percent on January 1st, and a one percent on July 1st, which is basically then a two and a half percent increase. And similar, 2021 is a two percent increase on January 1st and a one percent increase on July 1st. Some adjust, small adjustments on, as the AFCME contract, as far as health insurance premiums and what they contribute. But that's, those are the two major issues, is the reorganization that we, we wanted, and of course, the wages for this agreement. So if you have questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Can you refresh on total budget impact?
In this one, and I should have had that in front of me, I believe this is about thirty-five to thirty-six thousand dollars. I have to check, but I, I think that's pretty close to being correct. And part of that, it comes from splitting that, that raises, any easy way to do that.
Other questions of Patrick?
And just for your information, we won't be starting the last contract with May, next week, and it will be done until next year, where we have the two police unions to negotiate with.
Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the local Forty-Niners labor agreement.
Second.
And any discussion?
Chime in to say it's nice to see this one get finalized. It's nice to see a three-year agreement, and thank you to all the great work that our Public Works crew does, especially this time of year, they're very busy.
I know the reorg will be better for operations.
All those in, with motion and a second on the table, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Item 8E, Ace Hardware Invoices. Will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Ace Hardware invoices.
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Abstain.
Motion carries. We have a discussion item on our agenda this evening for strategic planning, and Patrick, are you gonna walk us through?
Sure, I'll, I'll kick this off. As you all recall, we had presentations by two firms regarding strategic planning. It was pretty obviously that they had two different approaches and, and two different methods to, to get to the end. I don't know if we came to a consensus. I think there was some, a little bit difference of what we should be doing or how we should be doing it, and obviously, they've been calling me this week to find out what the result is. So we, I think we have to have a protracted discussion on, on those two firms and strategic planning, and if tonight's the night to do that, or scheduling a further workshop that's coming up on Monday. But I'd like to either get that ball rolling, or put it away if we're not going to do it, or whatever the case may be. I think it's important that we decide and, and get out what our feelings are and what the best roadmap is for this, for this project.
I think a great outcome for tonight would be to gather some thoughts and provide information to staff so that we can bring it to Monday's workshop if it needs to be workshopped. Didn't want to leave any agenda time without this on the agenda for us to kind of take conversation to the next level. I know a number of you kind of had some things you wanted to think about, and I've thought about some things, so we'll just open it up for discussion from there.
Weren't, didn't we leave that meeting with the proposal that Bolton Link was gonna take a look at, potentially providing a... Sort of strategic planning?
I would just, I guess if you wanted to move forward with the two that you have, or we would, we're looking for better clarification on how we can propose, but it sounds like you guys got two that you'll be in negotiation with?
I think that's part of the question, right? Not that, so, not that Bolton and Main is off the table. I think we just wanted to pick up the conversation where we left off with the last meeting.
I think we just wanted to pick up the conversation where we left off with the last meeting. And certainly, getting that clarification to Bolton and Mank so they can propose can certainly be a next step.
Well, and I think that was the issue, was that, again, with the two presentations, how different they were and what the approaches were and the thought about an operations plan versus a strategic plan. I'm not sure we knew what we were being asked to ask Bolton and Mank, and is it to be a full strategic plan, is it to be a strategic plant light? What, I mean, if you want to, and I think that's the clarification that we need to, if that's the case, we need to flip before Bolton and Mank. And again, I don't know their expertise as far as strategic planning goes, and if that's where they are good at or not, or if even offer those kinds of services, or if that's kind of just an outlier.
I sense we're venturing in the area we don't want to be involved in.
Fair enough.
And fair feedback.
For competence.
Fair feedback. Understand. Other items of feedback? Paul?
I'm a little late to the party here, so when I was appointed earlier this year, Patrick gave me a binder which had the, what I would call, a current strategic plan. Are we looking to just tear that up and start over, or modify that? I'm a little confused, because we had presentations that kind of sounded like we were going to start from scratch and go, but I'm not sure that, reading that plan, I'm not sure that it's all worth tossing out. There's some stuff that needs updating. So I'm just kind of curious, where my disconnect is there?
Yeah, and the firms were not given that strategic plan. They were asked to present as if this was going to be a new plan, because the plan's what, from '15 or earlier? I don't remember.
I think it was '15.
I don't remember the date. I think we've had a number of different changes here since that time as far as the board. I mean, you're an entirely different board that may have different ideas where you should be going or what you should be doing. You have a number of different staff differences than we've had before, so I wouldn't say that we wouldn't allow them to look at that, and maybe that's a shortcut that we can take, but, yeah, it just depends on what we desire and which way we want to go.
Thank you.
Patrick, were we, sorry.
Go ahead.
Were we going to ask them if, follow-up questions, or were you going to ask them some follow-up questions? Am I remembering that correctly?
And I don't recall if it was, if I was supposed to get those from you, an input from you or not for those follow-up questions. I'd have to look at my notes there. And that's, you know, I can do that now, but if there's, what I would like, if there's follow-up questions you would like me to ask, is to send them to me so I can follow it up, so.
My recollection was the portage, the scope of the Portage Partners Plan, I mean, that was big.
It was a big.
That was almost a comprehensive plan process. And the piece for, piece about Big River for me is that they landed with that operational plan, but I really feel like we need kind of that strategic planning side of that, too. Things for our community to get excited about, right? And I felt, I felt like that was kind of our, kind of our nuts and bolts end result. And so, you know, I guess I'm looking for something in between those two. And I think the big piece for me with the Portage Partners was their timeline. Can they do something in a shorter period of time? Because they were talking, we were well into fall and a fast approaching winter probably before we would have an end product. And I think we really wanted to try to have something, you know, that we could react to during budget season in some way, shape, or form. I do like the comprehensiveness of the Portage Partners. I do like their process a lot. But there were positives with Big River as well, so.
So I spent some time thinking about both presentations and looking at both presentations. I think I'm more comfortable with Big River being able to take a couple of extra steps to scale up on the community input piece and give that an authentic process and the time that it's due. But they seem to be the best positioned on articulating on the backside the work plan components, especially in an organization of our size and our municipal nature of what we do. I'm a little concerned on Portage Partners' ability to scale down. I appreciate they've got a long process and it's a great process. I think it's more robust than what we need. And I am concerned about them being able to feel good about appropriately scaling down to something that meets our timelines and the scope of what we're looking for. Also, there were a number of comments made repeatedly in that process from them on, well, if you're available in the summer, and that just tells me that they don't spend a lot of times in the municipal spot, because the summer's when all that budget work gets done, and we are busiest in the summer. And so making those comments tells me maybe they don't do a lot of municipal work versus Big River, I feel like they've got this chainsaw approach to, you know, comprehensive, or chainsaw approach to strategic planning, and it's a well-oiled machine that we could scale up to fit what meets our needs. And ultimately, on the input side, I do think, go back to my original comments from the meeting, that's going to come down to us making those invites and us making sure that the right people are at the right table. I feel like we can control that variable. That was just my thoughts. And also, I'll mention that Parks, Lakes, and Trails, EDA, Roads and Infrastructure, we have so many different groups that are waiting for this plan, that there are those near-term things that I just feel like we need to be crisp on and fairly quick on articulating, so we're hitting them in the budget plan. And we've got groups that are waiting for that. Even tonight's development conversation was a perfect example, where we can only say we don't know or we don't have a plan for so long, and then it starts to become our responsibility that we don't have a plan. And so that urgency is pushing me to want a faster approach rather than something that's much more long-term and comprehensive.
And I don't agree with that at all, or disagree with that at all. I just think there are some pieces of Big River, you know, that I, that their methods for gathering community feedback input were very efficient, but they weren't nearly as rich as some of those kind of, you know, focus groups or visioning sessions can be. So that would be a piece that I would like to see them add. That's, those are the pieces, I think, that get your community excited about the direction you're headed. They're not going to get excited about roads and sewer and water, we know that, but we want them to get excited about some things. And that engagement piece is really important to me. So that would be an area that I would like to see Big River kind of ramp up a little bit. I will have to say that I did receive two emails from individuals that, whose opinion I highly respect, that had a lot of really good things to say about Big River.
Okay, so what I'm getting is that we will contact both of the firms and we'll ask Portage Partners to ramp down a little bit and to condense their timetable and ask for a fresh proposal as far as that goes. And on the reverse side, we'll talk to Big River about maybe beefing it up a little bit, talking more about community input, visiting sessions, and have them come back both with a revised proposal and see kind of what we think of it all and where we go. And that's including the cost and timetable. And timetable sounds really important to the council at this point, and I agree, so.
I don't want a short change process and the information with the timetable, but I do want to be able to hopefully accelerate that in a way that we can really start taking a look at budget.
Yeah, and just for the aside, as far as the development and using infrastructure, that discussion's already taking place on the staff level about, very introductory, how, where would we go, what would we do, and it'll take us a little bit, but that, we've had a discussion on it a few times already, so we're moving in that direction. It's just, we need to know where we're going and what, you know, which part of town, which part of the city, city I should say, we're doing, so.
Okay. That's good to hear. Do you have what you need for feedback?
Pardon?
Do you have what you need for feedback?
Yes, I do.
I feel like we're in a okay spot. Okay. Staff updates? Start with Chief Peterson.
Mayor and city council members, I just wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present that lifesavings award in front of yourself and in front of the community. It, there are many times that we don't, you know, recognize the citizens and the good things that are going on in the community, and it was an amazing thing that happened. So thank you very much. The second item I have for you, and I'm not going to continually say this every time I come up in front of you for a staff update, but we do have the speed trailer out there, and it is really slowing people down. Just today, I was, decided to kind of hide behind the speed trailer and just kind of watch some of the vehicles that were driving. And it's amazing, it was soft on 61, and it does turn in from 55 to 45 and then 30. And it's amazing how many cars that does slow down, and hopefully is doing its job because we do have that pedestrian crosswalk right there. So we do definitely know it's making an impact. And lastly, as you know, every year, we are mandated to do some alcohol and tobacco compliance checks, and then we also do some other ones that are more educational. And we just received today that there will be trainings for all businesses in Washington County for the Alcohol and Tobacco Compliance Training for Businesses 2019. I won't get into total specifics here, but the training in Forest Lake is at the Headwater Service Center on June 4th. There is another training, June 5th, at Cottage Grove at the Washington County South Service Center. And then third training at Stillwater Washington County Government Center on June 10th. And what it is, is for businesses, staff, and, you know, managers of any businesses that sell alcohol and tobacco to spot fake IDs and acceptable forms of identification, know the signs of intoxication, learn effective practices to reduce sales to minors, and familiarize yourself with Minnesota statutes on tobacco and alcohol. And just so you know, because this is always brought up whenever there happens to be a compliance check and there happens to be a failure, all of these flyers and brochures are sent to every single business in Washington County that sells tobacco and alcohol. So I just want to make sure that we get that out there, and I just want to let all the businesses know that it is available for them. Other than that, I don't have anything else for you unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions of Chief this evening? Thank you for doing the award.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Donovan?
Yeah, I have an update. First, my update involves an apology to Mr. Undum for, I was writing an email regarding his brilliant EDA presentation. It had some zoning district elements to it, and he nailed it. The email is writing, it was to council, and it was regarding the Jensen Avenue property that was the subject of the open forum comments. So I'll confirm that the city, you know, is moving forward with that. I can point to a couple of other times I was on site, even, actually hours before that second fire, just coincidentally, and I was there also today, this afternoon, to verify there is a dumpster there. So that progress has been made, that a dumpster is on site, and the city, and the owner, the owner has a lot of work to do, and probably the city does as well, and staff is following up on that.
Do you have contact information for some of the neighborhood representatives that were here tonight? I said we would get back to them. Can we just give them an update?
Yeah, I have, I talked to three different parties, including a gentleman who came in today, and I'll, I'll be able to, you know, I think it's a pretty tight, tightening-knit group, so if I just.
Thank you.
The Bush Telegraph will work well there.
Yes. Thank you.
I'd agree, communication's important.
Yes. Okay. Dan?
I have no update I wanted to take away from the council's updates on the EDA or cable commission, so I'll defer my comments to the members who were there for those meetings.
Very good. Chief, or Chief Newman?
I just want to provide an update on the hands-only CPR class that Forest Lake PD, Forest Lake Fire and the Lions have been putting on. Four or five months ago, I updated it so that we were going to start that program up again. Started the program about a year and a half ago. There was probably a six-month gap in there that we didn't hold classes, and so the goal was to present one class a month, and then look at it six months into the program to determine if we were going to ramp up that program. Currently, we've been doing classes on a weekly basis, and some of those classes have been double headers. We have more people that are interested in taking the class at this point than we have staff to teach the class. Tonight was a great example of somebody that bridged the gap before first responders had arrived, so I'm hoping that in our community, we see this type of lifesaving award given out with the council more and more often. And hopefully, we continue to fill up these classes and teach us valuable service to our community. That's all I had, unless you had some for me.
Anything for Chief Newman?
How many? Do you have a number so far, Chief?
I don't have a number, but each class is 24 people.
Okay.
So the next council, I can bring an update on how many people. We ran through the class already.
That'd be great. That's great. Karen, anything for us tonight?
None.
Very good. Patrick?
No, I just wanted to follow up on Donovan. The dumpster that we put out was, the city did that to try to encourage that cleanup. It wasn't, we were trying to move, we knew it was a problem, so we'd put that out there, so try to encourage that cleanup, so.
Mr. Casey, I think we're not, we don't want to advertise that too much.
But we don't.
Might encourage other.
I know, but that, this particular property was such a challenge and still is a challenge.
Cue the calls, right.
We were hoping to inspire the people there, so. I already mentioned the negotiations were made next week, and we are this week interviewing finance directors, and hopefully we'll have some kind of decision either this week or sometime next week.
I was going to ask that question after. Thanks.
Welcome back.
Oh, thanks.
Richard?
Thank you. Your update this evening?
I just want to ask Patrick a question. Where are we with the garbage and recycling?
It's planned for Monday's night workshop.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Dave?
Just a couple of updates. I'm sure Ryan has a lot of the stuff, so I won't get to it. With the union contract being approved, then we will post for the two positions that were approved in January, and we just wanted to wait, because we did some job description and name changes, so they will be posted most likely tomorrow. That's pretty much all I have. We'll see if anything else for me.
I'm hearing a lot of feedback on roads. I know you're getting copied on a lot of those as well. Any updates as far as pothole relief, gravel road conditions?
The weight restrictions.
I mean.
Weight restrictions came off last week, and all the asphalt plants are open now, so that'll be able, we were having to drive all the way to downtown St. Paul, pick up a few towns and drive all the way back, and then that's pretty much what you get for the day, so we weren't making much progress. So now the Scandia plant's open, so we'll make some progress in there. The gravel roads are starting to dry out. Our new grader, the motor blew up on that, so we just got a loaner today, so we weren't able to grade the last two days. I think after warranties, we're fine there, but, yeah, we're going to have to do some work out there, especially right off of the Fenway Roundwood. Yeah, they've driven that way, the first 200 feet have just turned into black dirt for some reason. I don't, I don't know what happened, but this is a rough winter, so some of the spots that we patched up will be graveling this year with the gravel budget to try to get some, you know, more gravel over the top. But, I mean, that's probably a discussion we'll have to have going forward, you know, once it kind of slows down, to kind of put some numbers together and what we're kind of talking about, what would cost to kind of redo and tear those sections and all that.
Bring those cost items back to us, whatever, give us some options, what we need to do.
And it might be a discussion of, do you, if you're going to rebuild the road section, do you just pave it then, too, or do you?
Yes.
Do you design that into it, you know, so I think, with help of Ryan, and I think we can get some numbers together to see what would make the most sense.
Very good. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, do have a few things to bring to your attention. The Bell's Park Master Plan is well into progress. They just completed an online survey and actually received 444 survey responses, so that's excellent. Wednesday, we have the pre-construction meeting for Encore Apartments, which is just in the northwest, or northeast quadrant of Fourth Street and 11th Avenue there. So 91 apartment buildings, and they would presumably be starting construction right away. away. They've already started cleaning and grubbing. On Thursday, we have the bid opening for the Seal Code and Crack Filling Project, so at our next City Council meeting, we'll bring back the bids for a potential award. And then right after that, we have the pre-con for the local street project, which will be on the northeast part of the city. That's financed by the franchise fees and for that project, state aid project, started on Centennial. You'll see some spots here and there removed and no work sitting for, right, rest of the day. So we're trying to leave the pavement as long as we can. We did all the storm sewer already on Centennial. They should have finished the storm sewer on 15th by this evening, and then they'll jump over to 11th Street Southeast, and then we'll start into some of the bigger removals on the project with the curb and stuff like that, so that project's moving pretty fast. Second Avenue, got some things to update you there. High Tractor will be in to fix a curb stop, and then they're supposed to be tolerancing the Class 5 or the gravel out there, which will allow for paving the base course this week, which is the first lift of Blacktop, the Batuminous. And then after that's, work's completed, then they'd be able to proceed with everything behind the curb and gutter, which includes the flatwork or concrete sidewalk and restoration. And then when everything's done there, then they can come and pave the final wear course and striping. So this work's obviously important in our schedule. We'll see how much work we can get accomplished. On other sites that are just very busy right now, North Lakes Academy, behind Cub Foods, the new school there, the Lea, the two projects at Headwaters, and Annexed has really gone full speed ahead. Headwaters Landing started moving some dirt today, so that's an apartment building right off of Headwaters Place, and Headwaters Place can't really finish anything more in Phase 1 until a lot of that dirt gets consumed for the site right there. I haven't heard anything yet about Phase 2. Yes or no? No, not yet. So Headwaters 11, some work's been done going there, so things getting busy, and we'll be busy, and obviously, a lot of congestion on 35, but I think a lot of progress is due to the age of the year, so looking forward to more being completed there. That's all I got, unless you got some questions.
Any questions for Ryan? All right. Start with, start with you, Paul.
All right, thank you. I attended the first annual Comfort Lake, Forest Lake watershed meeting, which a number of you did. Turnout exceeded expectation. It was a very well-done event. I was at a Forest Hills Golf Course, and I think everyone came away with a very good impression of the watershed district. I also attended the planning commission meeting. We will see, I believe it's the first meeting in June, a final PUD for the 224th Avenue Development.
Third, Third Lake Estates.
I'm sorry?
Third Lake Estates.
Third Lake Estates. It's kind of up, not too far from where Aqua was, up on the hill there. And last, lastly, I attended my first cable commission meeting. I was very impressed with this new studio that's in the school. They're getting a lot of interest from the students on how they can get involved and what they can do, and they really have been good stewards of the money, and got a fantastic deal with some, somebody down in Chaska Station. I'm looking at Dan here, who can probably feel us better.
Yeah, I think it was Scott County or somewhere, I mean, it was, somewhere in the southwest metro.
Just North Iowa there. Was closing down a studio, so they were able to pick up a lot of equipment for pennies on the dollar, so it's really a nice studio if you haven't been over there. They also covered their audit. They did an outstanding job on their audit. Got it all, the I's crossed the T's, it was very, very well done. And I think we can shout out to Dan over there. He, she's an active member on that commission and keeps them on a straight and narrow. That's all I got.
Just piggyback on your cable commission comments. There was a strategic shift in the last two years from doing lots of sports programming to more education programming, so what had been spent on equipment that was for sports broadcasting has now been changed to equipment available, and these are all paid for on cable commission franchise fees. There's a component of that fee that gets put away for equipment and education, and so it's great to see that happen in the schools, and it's a, welcome, it's tell everybody to get over there and see that in the studio. It's a fantastic space, so they did a nice job.
So now the groups and I'm on have met in the last few weeks, except this week we have a Fenway Advisory Board meeting on Wednesday.
Sam?
Thank you. I did attend the watershed district meeting, same as Paul did. It was, they need a bigger place next year, and I think, that's all I know, so. And they did a really good job of explaining exactly what their role is and what they do and that kind of thing, so. And then I also attended the airport commission meeting, which took place on the first Wednesday, and there was really only one item on the agenda that we're looking at it to doing a kind of a project on the runway just for maintenance and that kind of thing, and we're just waiting for the state to give us the word on whether or not they're going to fund it. And then there was some discussion too. We had some issues with parking on taxiways and blocking taxiways. We got that squared away too, so. And then the next evening, on the next Thursday, then, I attended the school board meeting, and that was on May 2nd. And it's pretty much butterplate stuff. I mean, they go through their reports same as we do, and, and they talked about, you know, the custodial maintenance, laundry employment agreement, mechanics employment agreement, self-insurance, the snow day resolution, those boilerplate stuff they needed. And then there was also a presentation of what's been going on with the building and where your money's going on the buildings. And they're progressing very well, and so far, they've been under budget and on time, so. And then it went into a closed session, so that's when I left. And the closed session was discussed preliminary considerations, allegations or charges against an individual or something, so that's, that was just on the agenda. All right?
I attended the Forest Lake Lake Association Annual Meeting, and that was, that too, was very, very well-attended. There were some concerns that came up at that meeting from some residents about some of our city-owned lake access points, the small ones, and I rolled that up to staff. And I know there's some conversation happening around that and potentially some opportunity for Parks, Lakes, and Trails to do some improvements on some of those spaces, so that's, that's great news. Attended the senior center board of directors meeting. Attended the Spring Fling last Saturday, which was an absolutely outstanding event. 300?
Wow.
At least? At least? Yeah. Yeah, great attendance. It was a beautiful day. Definitely a keeper. You know, that egg hunt can't hold a candle. So, and then just some additional citizen communication. I think most of us received the communication around the trash containers being visible, you know, opportunity maybe to have an ordinance around, you know, where those are, where those are located on people's properties. Some continued conversation around or correspondence on 97 and Goodview with the kids becoming more active now, and some concerns about traffic and kids crossing the street there. And then the stop sign on Everton Avenue and Everton Trail that we, I think, most of us received on email about that as well, so. Oh, and the roosters are back.
As roosters tend to...
I talked to the rooster owner.
Recently?
Yeah, Friday, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Just prior to this meeting, I attended the EDA meeting and received an update of the EDA that the grant application that was previously submitted related to the environmental insight study for the city-owned 117 acres at Headwaters has been approved, and that work will be starting here shortly. So it's great to see that moving forward. As Mr. Jensen was presenting tonight, you heard a couple of comments about the city-owned land, and this is that city-owned parcel that we're talking about. In my opinion, this is about land use and understanding what is available there and what might we do from a commercial perspective, and have a little more solid answer before we make some more strategic decisions around that property. And then the EDA spent most of their time tonight in a discussion around downtown, primarily around scope of downtown and what would we consider to be the downtown core. We talked about defining a downtown, or we did define a downtown core with a number of layers working out from the downtown core with the goal of wanting to make the most impact, and it's easier to do that in a smaller section than a much larger area. So it was a good conversation. Also started to tee up what might become an application for a grant related to an infrastructure study. As we talk about success of downtown and wanting to encourage more residential development downtown, we need to have some infrastructure study overall, and then as well as just basic sewer and water capacity. What, you know, how much elasticity of growth do we currently have, and at what point would we need to consider some significant infrastructure investments? So good conversations teeing up. Dan has some takeaways to bring back to our next meeting. He didn't take any official action on anything. It was more of a workshop format this evening. I've received a lot of citizen, lots of citizen communications on two main topics. We talked about roads tonight, gravel roads, and part of that is just seasonal, and it's a tough time for gravel roads. As I've reached back out to a lot of residents, residents, previous council conversations have circled around potential paving, and although there's always interest in paving, most of the residents seem to understand, look, I live on a gravel road, I expect I'm going to continue to live on a gravel road, just please maintain it to the standards I'm looking for. So I tell staff, you know, bring back those items to council so that we can make sure those are resourced appropriately. And then, I don't know if it is the season, but code enforcement just seems to be a topic of challenge in a number of areas. We heard it tonight at open forum. You know, it, it makes me reflect on the question that another resident had posed around trash containers. I think that's a lovely aesthetic. I think we've got some ways to, some ground to cover in code enforcement of just existing code before we raise the bar even higher. I responded back to that resident suggesting that perhaps we do some education around the next trash cycle when we do a next contract and have some education around proper storage, and we can always encourage good action, but making that the next ordinance, I think we've got some existing work to do on just maintaining existing code compliance and make sure we've got the right staff capacity to address that, so. Other items, I attended the April 24th Planning Commission meeting, and just another thanks to that group. Again, Mr. Black did a very thorough motion, very detailed, and they had a great discussion related to the concept plan we heard tonight. Number of conversations with different developers in different stages of consideration, so those are always great to hear. And also, just a quick heads-up to council, no predictions on where the transportation bill is going to go in legislative session for 2019 and what that means for us from a budget perspective, but certainly something we should all have our eye on. And then this is a budget year, which means next year, the even-numbered year is 2020 is a bond year, and staff has started to put together a list of what we may want to submit as part of an initial bond proposal, so that list will be coming back before you. The timeline for that is quite fast. It seems like they just break from session and they go right into a bonding session, so we need to have our ducks in a row from a bonding perspective for sure by this summer. So we'll be thinking about what that might look like, and staff's going to be coming back with some recommendations, so. I think that's all I've got. Nothing further before the council. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're adjourned.